All right, I'm gonna call the meeting to order the bill council regular meeting, May thirteenth, twenty twenty-five at seven oh one P M. If we could please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the five of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We had a lot of extra help tonight. That was nice.
Thank you. Madam Court, could you call the roll, please?
Cook.
Here.
Kemp.
Yes.
Helmut.
Absen.
Ross.
Here.
Nikasia.
Here.
Okay, um, we have a quorum. Item four, approval of the agenda. Is there a motion on the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the amendments of changing item nine I to item nine A. So we will move special applications, special event application autism awareness open mic in Centennial Park to item nine A. And then I'd also like to add an additional item nine J for the recent renovation of Marine Hilton.
Okay, motion made by Kemp, seconded by Nikasia. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nay? Motion carries. We have an amended agenda. Number five on the agenda this evening is public hearing. So the first is the second reading of the amendment to Code of Ordinance is chapter thirty-four, article four. This is our fire prevention section thirty-four dash ninety-six, open burning ordinance revision. There are motion to open the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to open the hearing.
Support.
Okay, the hearing opened at seven oh three, made by Ross, seconded by Nikasia. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any nay? Motion carries. This public hearing is open. If anyone would like to speak on our proposed new fire ordinance, please feel free to step to the podium. Thanks. Seeing no one approach the podium, uh, we can go ahead and close that public hearing at seven oh three.
Four.
Seven oh four. Thank you.
Support.
Um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. That hearing is closed.
Who's supporting?
Kemp. Sorry.
Good. Thank you.
Cook, Kemp. Um, the second public hearing this evening is for delinquent bills and violations to be added to the twenty twenty-five tax rule per ordinance three twenty-one, section seventy dash seventy-eight D. Need a motion to open that public hearing?
So.
Ross.
Four.
Uh, seconded by Kemp. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. The public hearing is open at seven oh four. Okay. Um, if anyone would like to speak during this public hearing, this is regarding adding our delinquent water bills and other violations to the twenty twenty-five tax rule, please approach the podium. Seeing again, no one moving, we will go ahead and move to close that public hearing.
Second.
Cook, Ross, at seven oh.
Aye.
Five. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. That hearing is closed. Our third and final public hearing is budget adoption and treatment taxation. Um, I'll make a motion to open that public hearing at seven oh. Five. My clock's different than yours, so no sorry. Cook, Ross, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's public hearing is open. If anyone would like to speak to our proposed budget, please feel free to step to the podium. Okay, seeing no one moving, we will go ahead and move to close that at seven oh five.
Second.
Cook, Ross, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, next is our call to the public generally. So this is for anyone who wishes to address council this evening about any issue that may be on your mind, please feel free to step up to the podium. No takers. Go ahead and close, um, public comment. There will be a second opportunity later down in the agenda. Next is our consent agenda, item number seven. Um, the first one are receive and file items.
Motion to approve consent agenda, item A, items one and two, correspondence letters and communication, and item two, department reports.
Support.
Okay, motion by Nikasia, seconded by Kemp. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any nay? Motion carries. Next is our consent agenda for our approval items.
Motion to approve consent agenda items B, one, two, and three, approval minutes from April eighth, twenty twenty-five, April fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, budget workshop, bills in the amount of one hundred fifty-five thousand, seventy-seven dollars and six cents, and the monthly budget report, treasures report, budget amendments. Support.
Motion by Nikasia, seconded by Kemp. Uh, roll call vote, please.
Cook.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
Nikasia.
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Motion carries. Those items are approved. Moving on to item eight, our unfinished old business. This is our D D A Oakland County ARPA project, the gazebo refurbishment.
And council, in your packet is, it's a rendering, um, from Joel Lotosa from Design House Architects. Just as a F Y I, um, if you recall, this project is, um, part of the Crosswalk Project as well as some other improvements in the area, and the refurbishing of the gazebo in Centennial Park. Um, and part of that is also, you'll see there's a, uh, an ADA ramp being installed on the rear side of that. They looked at a couple of different layouts, and having it come off the rear kind of gets it closer to those entering the ramp that would be parking in the handicap areas right behind the park, makes it a closer access for them to get it to the ramp and up around the back. Initially, they had it kind of around the side and wrapping around it differently, but they came up with a different design after they had some conversations with the D D A. So it's just more of a, um, kind of a heads up. Uh, they're, they're getting close, everything ready to get to put this out to bid. So.
Uh, Joe, curiously, um, the text is a little bit smaller in here and pulled up on my phone. Um, is the electric moving aggressively here?
Not in this particular bid, uh, because it's gonna, but we are, and Rudy's, um, our D B W superintendent has met, and I've talked to Kimberly as well at the V D A. We want to keep them kind of separate because they're totally two different animals. Um, but he's kind of pulled together some bullet points, and I even have given those to, uh, Joe from Design House to let them know that we don't want to mix them together because they're just so different trades and stuff. But yeah, we're looking at that separately.
Okay, thank you.
We want them to be able to, the D A and their, and their people come out there and be able to plug in and, and have the, the covers on the plugs without us having to leave it unlocked and open overnight and stuff like it has happened in the past, so.
Do you have an, um, idea when this work would take place? Obviously, it needs to be done before the end of next year.
This, this summer, they're still looking at this summer.
Great.
Um, I would assume.
Yeah, it has to be done by.
After the concerts in the park are end of June, first part of July, what are they? Okay, yeah. So probably after concerts in the park are wrapping up.
Okay, sometime this fall.
So that could be, uh, July and August, September is a lot of window there.
Is this just information only at this point?
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, this was brand new, given to us. Uh, they had to redesign it, and he got it to me just the day before the pack was going out. I said, it'd be nice to at least kind of show you something so you guys can see where we're at on it, or where they're at on it.
Thank you. All right, uh, moving on to new business. First up is the special event application, twenty-five dash zero eight autism awareness open mic in Centennial Park.
And.
I know we have some folks in the audience here about this, so if anybody wants to speak about it, feel free to step up to the podium and tell us your name.
You gotta love it.
Hello, I'm Melissa South, and this is Peyton Rushman from Killianville. We are contributors at O E S for our Approaching Exhibition, where we do a presentation on a certain problem or topic. We will need to take action to try and help the cause we are researching. Our topic is autism, and we'd like to host an open mic night in Centennial Park to raise awareness. We've already submitted an application to the D D A, which was filled out by my mom, Kelsey Lusand. We would start the concert with our M C, with our M Cs, AKA us, and informing them what it is, what autism is, and what the child can do. We would like to invite autistic and non-autistic people to the concert. We might think, how will we know about it? Well, first of all, we plan to hang flyers around our school informing people about the open mic night as well as the date and time. My mom, um, could also advertise a digital version of our flyer across social media platforms like Facebook or Instagram. We would like, if this concert could take place on June tenth from six to eight P M. at Centennial Park downtown Oxford. We hope we can get approval for this event so that autistic people can be heard, people know more about autism, and can overall have a fun time. Thank you so much for giving us this opportunity.
Very well done.
Yeah, thank you. It'll be excellent, M Cs, I can tell.
Boy, for fifth grade, that was, uh, well presented.
Very, very good. All right, so I see we have a completed event application. There's no conflict with the date according to Mr. Mador, so it should be good to go there. Um.
Happens to be during our council meeting that month, so.
Okay.
So that's run over.
You sing a song after?
Quick meeting, quick meeting, and, you know.
Can we put together a quick number?
Wrap up of here quickly and get over there and out of here.
Yeah, I'm, I'm known to run a really quick meeting, so I think we can, we can do it.
I will make a motion to approve special event application twenty-five oh eight and approve the requested, um, waiver for waiting deposit and insurance cost.
Support.
Motion by Ross, seconded by Nikasia. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any nay? Motion carries. Your event is approved. Thank you so much for coming in. Thank you.
Good job.
Great work. Next up is the special event application. And feel free to continue to watch the meeting as long as you'd like, or if you want to scoot out, I totally understand, so. Okay, the next up is the special event application twenty-five zero six, March with Oxford in Centennial Park. And I know we have some representatives as well. If you'd like to, um, speak on it, feel free. Otherwise, um, I know we're familiar with the event, it's been successful over the past few years, so. But if there's a motion from council, we can go right ahead with that, too.
Is there a? Are you looking for any transwaiver?
Yes. I'm not sure if that one got in. Initially, when it came in, I, I put it in there and I had to reach back out to Madeline, I think it was. Yes, and, and, um, she got me back when it does have the signature for the waiver on it. I'm sorry, that, that one didn't make it in the packet, but we do have it on file.
Will you request for the insurance and deposit?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve special event application, uh, twenty-five dash zero six, March with Oxford in Centennial Park, and grant the insurance and deposit waiver.
Second.
Okay, motion by Kemp, seconded by Ross. Any discussion?
Yes. Um, it does say, uh, please press the site of all you need to do.
As long as Chief Mike's aware.
Yep.
And, yeah, is there anything else? I caught him off guard talking, chief talking to chief back there. No, um, you're aware of March Oxford, um, probably fire employees are aware, so you'd be able to support as much as normal.
Yep, the application's been shared with the fire department, uh, the schools and, and the township as well. I'm not sure if they connected with the township or not, but they all have the information.
Yeah. Great. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any nay? Motion carries, um, and passes. That event is approved. Thank you so much for coming in. Um, next up is our special event application twenty-five oh seven for the Memorial Day parade at Centennial Park.
Again, uh, the application's in your packet. The, uh, the folks at the, um, American Legion have provided us the information, and Chief Sewell's map, everything is, nothing has really changed. Um, I have shared this with Chief Majestic, so they are aware as well, because they do get towards the edge of town there. They have provided insurance, but I believe they're looking for a waiver of the deposits. Initially, had a check, they don't have it, so he did sign for the waiver of the deposit. So the insurance is in there, so the waiver below is, would be just for the deposit.
Is the township aware of this event? I mean, it's standard.
Yeah.
So.
I will make a motion to approve special event application twenty-five oh seven and, uh, along with the deposit waiver approval as well.
Motion by Ross, seconded by Nikasia. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nay? Motion carries. Approved. Next is the, um, second reading of the amendment for our fire prevention ordinance. Is there a motion to approve the second reading?
Motion to approve the second reading of the fire ordinance.
Support.
Okay, motion by Nikasia, seconded by Kemp. Any discussion?
Well, I think just to state the obvious, the biggest thing is banning of campfires.
Bonfires.
Bonfires. Bonfires in there. Um, you know, out with abundance of safety and how tightly close all of the, the buildings are to each other, I think this makes sense. And I think it's, uh, just, we're updating, um, to today's standards, so, um, not a whole lot going on other than that, but there are changes, so make sure you read through it.
Yeah, absolutely. And the fact that it's, um, very much consistent with the township's ordinance, which is easy for people to, and fire department, and not have to differentiate different jurisdictional lines, so positive all the way around, I think, too. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Nikasia.
Yes.
Cook.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
Kemp.
Yes.
Motion carries. The second reading is approved. Next is proposed resolution twenty-five oh five, the budget adoption.
The resolution is in your packet there, um, as long as the tax rate request for the L forty twenty-nine.
Any? Oh, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty-five oh five to adopt the twenty-five, twenty-six year budget as presented.
Support.
Okay, motion by Kemp, seconded by Nikasia. Any discussion? Several times over the months to go over this budget, so. If there's something further there from council, do a roll call vote to approve.
Cook.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
Kemp.
Yes.
Nikasia.
Yes.
Okay, the motion carries, and our budget is adopted with that resolution. Next is resolution twenty-five oh six, the delinquent utility billing and violations, um, to adopt. There.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty-five oh six.
Support.
Okay, motion by Ross, seconded by Kemp. Any discussion?
Let's do that link and do a question. So I went through and looked at everything. Obviously, our folks have been notified, but what happens, you know, if somebody moves still in the district or, like? Like, there's one example, they moved, they moved buildings. Are we really going to, it's twenty-five dollars. Do they know about it?
I don't know. Okay.
They get two notices, yes.
Okay. To their new address?
Whatever we have on file, yeah.
Okay.
Because usually they'll call us and then move their name over to the new address. So there's communication over the phone typically that way as well.
When they make that communication, there's nothing that pops up about anything delinquent.
I don't know. That'd be a Vicki question. Vicki handles all those. Yeah, front office, other Vicki.
Oh.
Front counter Vicki. That's her email, front counter.
I don't know if it does, because all you're doing is changing the name, but she will look at it and see if they had a balance.
It would automatically cross reference.
It's kind of an odd number to be left over, too.
Is it?
And we do accept payments. People come in, when we send the notices out, hey, you know, you guys, what's going on your bill? Several people do come in and, and pay. I think a few of them paid down what they could, so a smaller amount was placed on the taxes, too.
I mean, some of these have even gone up since we printed this, I feel like.
No, because it's only for the last year.
Yeah, they gotta be six months old to go on there.
It's not the new bills.
So these have been, as of December thirty-one, amounts. So they have to be like six months old to get on the taxes.
Anything, at least from the business standpoint, that the D D A can help to support this?
I don't know. Short answer.
Something to look into as far as, you know, get where the bills are coming to, what area, yeah.
Do anything about the envelopes differ from, like, is anything about, like, the edge of the envelope, like, red or something?
Well, there's, there are postcards that go out, and, and we, we used to have the red, you know, they're all with blue, blue back when they're preprinted in blue, and then we print the black data into them, um, for a long time.
Those are the notices.
I guess.
I guess, yeah.
The notices.
Okay.
Show up differently. We get so much.
Because we don't, yeah.
The difference between the notice and the bills, is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
The notice comes in the Village of Oxford envelope.
Yeah, well, the bill is just a postcard, so it's definitely, definitely a look to it.
It's a different one.
Business envelope with their logo on it.
It's always distinct, and there's nothing to do.
Yes.
Yeah.
It's different, yes.
I'll also mention for the, uh, water and sewer bills, um, I think our residents know about this, but maybe not all of them, so I'll just mention it. The, um, Gray Lakes Water Authority, water residential assistance program's available, so it's income-based, I believe up to hundred, up to two hundred percent of the federal poverty level, and that gets people in a bill, a bill that they can afford based on the amount of their water bill and their income. And then, um, also the Oakland County Water Resources Commissioner's Office about hardship assistance program. So that's for the two hundred to three hundred percent of the federal poverty level for a household that's experienced a hardship. So that could be anything from a loss of job, or, you know, a death in the family, or something that comes up that you don't expect. And that can pay up to three months on someone's water bill, or up to two thousand dollars of their past due, uh, invoices. And so maybe going forward, um, we could put those flyers in the notice as well, if it is a water-related issue.
And we do have those conversations sometimes when they come in, and even, I even, uh, lady was in last week before the deadline and trying to make some payments, and I asked her about it, and I said, it's right on the front page of our website. Um, but I also, I went back and I called, because if you recall, the, uh, O S A, Oakland, uh, County used to handle that, and now it switched to the, uh, United Way. And I said, you know, I haven't double-checked. So I would, after she left, I went back and I called that number and made sure, and they were answered right away, and they were, yep, people from your community can still call us. So it was still a good connection, and, and they're still answered, and we're ready. It was pretty easy to get ahold of somebody. Um, so we, we do our, we do try to point people in that direction and, and remind them, or at least enlighten them, let them know.
Yeah.
And I think, I'll, I'll double-check, though, when those notices go out, that this kind of information is included in there as a heads up. They can read it at the same time.
Yeah, that'd be great.
We also make, I'm seeing that on the homepage. Can we also make sure we, um, like, put on the Facebook page and whatnot? My lord, the, the program for summer watering, let's see what you got.
That did go out.
That did go out?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. We can keep posting it though, under Nick's, so.
Thank you.
Any other discussion or questions? Okay, uh, roll call vote, please.
Kemp.
Yes.
Nikasia.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
Cook.
Yes. Motion carries. That resolution is adopted. Next is the, um, proposed resolution twenty-five zero seven for West Nile. This is the West Nile Virus Fund Program.
Yeah, yeah, we've been doing that for, I don't know, twenty years or so. It's, it helps the D B W get the items from the county to put in their catch basins and stuff for mosquito control, like mosquito dunk, I think they call it, or, yeah.
I will make a motion to approve resolution twenty-five oh seven.
Support.
Okay, motion by Ross, seconded by Nikasia. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Nikasia.
Yes.
Cook.
Yes.
Kemp.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution is adopted. Um, next is nine, um, I don't even know what letter it is, because we moved them around, but the Moyers Street contract.
Yes, right. Uh, yeah, let me get caught up myself. So, um, and Paul's here from Row, uh, if you may remember Paul from before. So we had our bid opening. Um, we only had a couple bids, but they were in range at least, and, and below our engineer's estimate, so that was good. Um, Paul's reviewed some of those and has a recommendation, um, to award that, uh, project in the packet. And that's a recommendation that the company is Synergy. It's a, it's a local company, and, uh, they plan on, on working and having another local company, B S I paving, to do the, uh, actual paving of the project once they're done with the underground work. It's seven hundred ninety-nine thousand and forty-six cents was their bid, so. I think, well, it was like three percent below, wasn't it, Paul, of the engineer's estimate, or something like that? Yeah, three point eight percent lower than the engineer's cost opinion, so.
Great. Could you remind me again, when is, when is this project potentially scheduled for?
Well, as I, I was working on my letter, I've noticed, too, that Moyers Street residents prior to the meeting, um, as long as Eagle approves our water permit, which they've had for over a month or so now, um, we plan on starting, like, the week after fourth of July.
Okay. It'll be done before our trick-or-treating this year.
Yes, uh, yes. They were, um, the, the, when we had, after the bid opening, our, our discussions with them, it, it, it sounds like a different, whole different approach, better approach, and they're gonna, it sounds like they want to hit it with a large amount of people to get it done sooner, because it fits a window that they have.
Correct.
We have priorities.
Yeah.
There, we shouldn't have been anywhere near, um, Halloween last year, and, um, we should not be this year either.
Yeah, yeah. I just want to point out that, um, you know, Mr. Mador does a great job of coordinating, as always, our water main work with, you know, sewer inspection work with the street paving, so it all gets done at once. So now, as we know, we did, um, Park Street last year, so now Moyers Street will be all freshly repaved with a brand-new water main, so it'll make a big difference for everybody who lives on that street, so.
Yeah, because every now and then, those folks that still have the old galvanized lank connecting their home, they just can't get the volume to it because of the corrosion inside the line. Just, they build up corrosion, yeah. It's, they can't get the volume to it, so. There's only seven homes, I think, on this stretch that need to have the, the last, the interior leg done, though, till more of them had been updated just over the years on their own. All of the ones, of course, the main and goes over to the curb staff are all we knew, but several of them have already replaced, upgraded the part from the curb staff into the home.
Perfect. Is that a motion I heard?
I was starting, yes. I would make a motion to approve, um, the Moyers Street contract award, Synergy Health and Specialist, and, um, that received seven hundred ninety-nine thousand dollars and forty-six cents.
Support.
Motion by Ross, seconded by Nikasia. Any discussion?
Um, so the funds that were, uh, it looks like I didn't even write up, um, that row created, it looks like the funds that were bringing to the table are now a little bit below what we were expecting.
Yeah.
Because some of the water also.
Uh, yeah, because we're, we're up, we awarded with a grant through M dot, a maximum of two hundred thirty-nine thousand, and then some of those work is participating funds, and some are not participating. And there was an email going back and forth today, too, about some of the ADA work, sidewalk work, that they want to clarify, because she had, uh, the lady woman at M dot had missed some of the notes. So that, that's a movable number, let's put it that way. It could, could creep back up. We want to take advantage of the full two hundred thirty-nine if we can.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Okay, uh, roll call vote, please.
Ross.
Yes.
Cook.
Yes.
Kemp.
Yes.
Nikasia.
Yes.
Motion carries. That contract award is approved. Next is the Moyers Street Construction Engineering.
Okay, the number nine H is in your, uh, packet. Um, very similar situation, um, where we have in the past, where they have onsite personnel there, and a lot of the work is on the front end that Paul does in, in going through into bids and getting them out the bid, but then there's a lot of work. We're still working on the closeout of the Park Street, you know, project. And of course, there's issues with that project that are causing that, uh, the finishing, um, to be put together. It's still not going to be closed up for a while. So a lot of the work that they do isn't just this onsite work that they're there during the project work. It's a lot after the project work as well as what's rolled into this, so. Row has a, a couple of main, uh, changes and a couple of sections of their contract. Bob and I discussed those a week or two ago. We want to iron out those wrinkles.
It, it, it won't be, um, difficult. I, I've talked to Paul. We just, I just have one, one or two sentences that I want to work through a little bit. As, as you recall, I don't, I'm not a fan of limitations on liability for gross negligence.
Yeah.
So, um, just one sentence we got to clear up.
Okay, so that's before this is a.
No, I think we can go forward with it, and I, I think the sentence will get clarified.
Sounds good.
Yeah, so the, the, uh, the agreement is written for the construction stake in engineering onsite, and then observation and stuff, and the testing is eighty-nine thousand three hundred. Um, so if you were to approve that for me to sign that, once it's been approved by Mr. Davis.
Uh, Joe, do you have, um, I guess you have rates established, um, in case there's an unforeseen change in scope or, um, timeline?
Yeah, they have different rates.
Nine weeks.
Yes, and, and, you know, last year, we, I think the engineer's estimate of time was maybe eight weeks, whatever, and it ended up being like eighteen. So that was a lot of a problem. We had some liquidated damages coming at the end, the penalties for the contractor. And Paul was trying to be a little more cautious this year, extended it out a little bit, so. But then after now meeting with the new contractors, I don't think they're going to need that much time. They're, they're talking like six, seven weeks, or something like that perhaps, and so we might even shave a little bit off that. Um, he did move the, our, the, the goalpost out a little bit for us this year to not come in high and have it be so far over, because we, we don't, they don't manage the project and, and tell them how to do the work. It's up to them to do, man the work and do the work. They're there to take measurements and quantities and things like that.
But there are pre-approved hourly rates.
Yeah, but they have different rates for different personnel as well, too.
Is what you're.
Yeah, let's, let's make sure we get that up front somewhere.
Yeah, because they, they do like reviews for site plans and stuff for us throughout the year as well, and we use some of those rates come into play there. Because they, they do like reviews for site plans and stuff for us throughout the year as well, and we use some of those rates come into play there.
Thank you.
Um, there's no further discussion. I'll make a motion to approve the professional services, construction engineering contract from Row for the amount of eighty-nine thousand three hundred. And authorize our village manager to sign that contract once it's approved by our village attorney.
Support.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Nikasia. Any discussion further? Hearing none, roll call vote please.
Cook?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Nikasia?
Yes.
Cam?
Yes. Motion carries. That's true. Item ten on the agenda is reserved for items removed from consent.
We get nine J.
Oh.
I'm sorry, we have one more.
Okay. Nine J. Uh, this is, we received a resignation letter from Councilmember Maureen Helmuth, dated today, May thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, so we need a motion to accept that resignation.
With great regret, I will make a motion to accept the resignation of Maureen Helmuth.
Is there a second?
Motion dies for lack of support.
There's four there. Ross?
Elect him second.
Okay, motion by Cam, seconded by Ross. Uh, roll call vote.
All right, Cam?
Yes.
Nikasia?
No.
Cook?
You know.
And Ross.
What, what's the process if we actually reject?
Oh, we'll tell you.
So, um.
Did you say yes or no?
She hasn't voted yet. Let her finish her vote.
Okay, so the motion fails, so it'll be on the agenda of next month.
Yeah, that's all we need to know.
Yeah. It's not effective yet because you guys didn't accept it unanimously.
Yeah.
So it goes to next month's meeting.
All right, add to ten then, items removed from consent agenda, there are none. So we'll move to the second instance of public comment. If anyone would like to address council, please feel free to step up to the podium. This could be anything on the agenda or off the agenda. Our librarian, Mr. Cumpeter.
Good evening.
Good evening.
It's been a long time.
It has.
Um, I was hoping that I'd have a newsletter to share with you this evening, but unfortunately, things are running behind schedule. We do know that they were allegedly delivered to the post office today, so they should be landing in your mailbox at home, probably before the end of the week. That being said, I just want to share with you, if you haven't been in the know so far, this is Oxford Public Library's one-hundredth anniversary year. We're very excited about that. I'm excited about that, because in a hundred years, I'm only the fifth head librarian this town's had. So it's, we take great pride in that, as I do as well. Additionally, I just want to share that we are planning a one-hundredth anniversary gala and fundraiser that will be held on July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, at Indianwood Golf and Country Club. Because it is a fundraiser, we want to have fun, obviously, and celebrate a hundred years, but because it is a fundraiser, it is a hundred dollars a ticket. But that will include dinner, drinks, live auction, and a silent auction, and music as well. So it's a great, great event. And our goal, obviously, is to have fun, but we want to raise as much money as we can for the endowment fund as well. You can purchase tickets right through the website, our website, at M I O B L dot org. They are actually up, and it'll take you to a direct link through the Fort County Community Foundation where our endowment is held, and you can purchase your tickets right through there. And then once you share that, once that information is shared with us in Fort County, we'll actually, because we have, it's a commemorative thing, so we have actual tickets for this event that we're gonna mail out. So we're excited. Also, some reading is going to be kicking off here real soon as well. All of that information is in this newsletter that you will be giving, too, so. Exciting. And I'm also working on curating an exhibit of the first hundred years of Oxford Public Library. And once that's ready, which it should be toward the end of this month, the first part of June, that information is going to be in the, in the newsletter, too. So lots, lots of stuff going on, needless to say. Sorry it's been so long since I've been here, but if you didn't know, this past year, I had a family emergency that kind of took me away for most of the summer. But I'm very happy to be back in full speed, and it's, it's great to be back, so thank you.
Welcome back, and thank you so much.
See you in a hundred years, Brian.
Anyone else like to speak under public comment, or move on? All right, so we will move on then to our committee reports. Noda?
Yeah.
Go right ahead, good.
I'd like to go. See, they're ragging me. They're even on to make sure I show up this week, which I am, so. Noda, things have been going well. There has been substantial amount of growth in a very short amount of time since everything passed in the fall. So they're still working out some wrinkles, but they've been doing kind of a conceptual job doing it, so if you are, you know, as they're going through that process, just keep us everyone up to date. I don't know if it's my, but it seems like things are going really well, especially with the amount of growth that's had to happen in a very short amount of time.
Yeah.
Thank you. Um, and then Planning Commission and Cable Commission, and Mo, she's absent, turning updates on.
I know we had the meeting, when we had our budget workshop on April fifteenth, and she came over here, but I don't know what was going on in that meeting.
We, we signed, yeah, they already signed.
That's what it was.
What is it called?
Eighteenth North, whatever, I can't remember the.
Revive or something.
Little shop, yeah, revive, there you go.
Um, and they're supposed to, they're gonna have a meeting next week.
Okay, I'm just saying, thank you. Um, DDA, Jacob?
Um, yeah, actually, I'm, feel free to come here and say anything you would like, but we've been doing, going through some facade grants. We also have a demolition grant out there as well, too, for the block company, and I forget the name of the business that we approve of facade grant for as well, too. And then I know that some of the committees are also working on their own initiatives. I know you residents are working on a plaque right now.
Yes, so we have an ad hoc home history committee through the DDA that is doing lots of different work, coming up with the celebration of the village for next year, also America Two Fifty, so different plaques around town, different label information, telling a little bit more about history. We're working on redoing an historic mural downtown that finally power washed completely off a few, few years ago. So really trying to celebrate and uplift the community. I know that there's a time capsule, so I guess before next meeting, and Mo's officially done, we need to know where that time capsule is, so that we can open it next year. Lots of really great stuff happening from that end, and Elton is helping support that effort as well. And then I really, with the DDA, I think, if you can speak with him, the collaboration of the budget workshops and meetings, like, this seems like such a smooth process this year that this seems really working, and I know, like, the rest of the DDA, from what I understand, is also really appreciating the process as well, too.
And some community staff are working on all of the events that are upcoming. The trolley is up and running, and we have our partnership with Lake Orient as well, too, so. Things are on the up and up, and a lot of things going on.
Absolutely. Great, thank you. Polly and Trail?
Uh, yes, and I brought my agenda with my notes on it this time. Polly and Trail does a lot, and it's amazing they can do what they do. They don't have a ton of funding. They're working on the master plan update, which is an ongoing process there. They did approve one of the historic plaque locations that CJ had presented them, after Drainer Road. They have a good spot for that. They approved a logo redesign, an update design to an Eagle Scout project. It's gonna be made part of a fundraising project for this young man. And it's the logo for the, the trail users isn't going to be changed, but this specific one is going to be changed specifically for his project through the fundraiser. Uh, and then they're purchasing some new signs. They've had a couple encroachments in the last year or two with people putting fences on their property and stuff, have to go to court and stuff, so. One of those was been removed last month, and the other one is about to be, I believe. Um, and then they're looking at a twenty-twenty-five trail resurfacing project, and they approved that at the last meeting. It's a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars total work. Eighty thousand of that was ARPA funds from Oxford Township to the Polly and Trail, so it helped fund a lot of that. And other than that, it's, it's a good group, and they get a lot done.
Thanks for the update. Um, there's no meetings of the DDA, so we'll move on to our manager, clerk, and attorney reports. Mr. Mador?
Um, yes, and I, I believe in my packet I included a long list bullet item to you guys, I hope. Rather than trying to remember all of that, it had to do with Park Street and Moyer Street coming up, and some other things going on. So if I hadn't received any questions or feedback, so hopefully you guys got the gist of all that. That's about really all I have. We're continuing to work on the projects and going forward.
Um, oh, go ahead.
I did have one question on the Lincoln Street mechanic, the drainage.
Oh, yes.
Is that, um, are we, are we gonna have to budget for that? How is that?
Uh, yeah, we're, we're looking at some options. We were looking, because there's some, we're famous for having these dry wells, because they work, right? You, you got a collection pipe here, it only goes two hundred feet, and it doesn't have an outlet, it just soaks in. And there's a couple spots down there by DA that it, it's not enough capacity in there, so when it's heavy rains, it backs up. So we're trying to reach either down Lincoln Street to connect to one that does eventually have an outlet, to M twenty-four, or reach north on, along a mechanic up towards Moyer Street. We're looking at, are weighing the options right now. Once we have something of a plan, it will be funded by the local road system. I bet we'd have to come back and look and see. It's just one of those things, it, it came on the radar because of the, the South Washington Triangle, the thirty-two condo units, the conditional use, you guys are zoning you approved. They were already going to be starting at Lincoln Street doing sewer and water extensions down and around, and Rudy thought, hey, they're already there in the intersection, why not have them also do this two-hundred-foot of storm sewer extension? So that's kind of what prompted it. It, it's been a problem. It doesn't really get into anybody's yard or things like that, but it's just, it floods the intersection at times, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Can we expect the samples from Oxford Lee's right to be back?
He said he planned on having them by the twenty-third, but he hoped to get us yet this week, I think? Or next week, yeah. Originally, because they were done a week and a half ago, and I reached out to him, and originally their plan was they were gonna get them back to us by the twenty-third, which he said he can get them, because I believe later this week.
Thanks. Okay. Taxes are officially settled for last year. I worked with the county and got that all figured out. Me and Vicki are gonna go do some training at the end of the month at the county, just for the other end of all this stuff that we didn't do before, and learn how to do that. And I've got a new prepayment option that I'm gonna work with Joe to get on the website, and it's if they want to do an electronic check, and it doesn't cost rather than something to pay the utility bills or their taxes. So instead of paying the fees for credit cards and the ACH, so I got that in the works right now, so. Other than that, we did a lot of shredding last week.
Always a good thing.
Oh, yeah, it would, it would.
It's a luxury.
The whole length of that wall, about three feet, about three feet high or four feet high, would have been what?
It's like painting a garage, right?
Great, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Davis, any news?
So I, I have something. Each year Eagle, State of Michigan, holds a, an annual conference, an environmental conference, and this year it's in Muskegon. It started today and it concludes on Thursday, right before lunch, with a one-hour keynote speech, which I've been asked to deliver. So I'd like to get out of here so I can meet with this fifth grader and get some pointers on how to handle that podium, because I've got to do one hour, and I could use a little help, so. Maybe we can chat after? Thank you, thank you.
You got it.
But it, it, it does involve the, the materials management planning headed by the county, and eventually this community is going to be presented with a county plan on how we're gonna manage all of our waste recyclables and trash in Oak, in, in Oakland County. And you're gonna be asked to approve that plan, and the, the planning stage goes on for about two years, and I've been instrumental in getting those plans underway in, in the state, so. You're gonna eventually be involved in this.
Wonderful. Thank you. Appreciate the updates. Okay, next, move on to council comments. Let's start from the top.
Um, yes, so two things. One, thank you, I know Rudy's not here, but thank you to help speak to Joe, and just be actually proud tonight. I'm just super thankful when we had issues with our water, how responsive everyone was, how every, like, just, and that's like, so if anyone does have any problem ever, I can't say kudo, no, I was not expecting such a rapid response.
And you weren't treated, you were not treated special. You were treated like anybody else.
No, no, but I, I do think, like, knowing that, and Rudy made a really good point a couple weeks ago, where, oh, I don't know, there's an issue, I can't, it's an issue, and so I'm just trying to be diligent about that, that if there is something going on,
Yes.
to let all of us know, so that we can hopefully address it if it's larger spread, like, so I'm just thinking it's an isolated incident. Um, second, congratulations to the library on a hundred years. This is my own PSA for my own end, libraries, museums across the country have had financial funding cuts. So IMLS, NEH, NEA, standard funding sources for entities like our public library aren't getting the funding anymore. Michigan Humanities, very well could shutter, which serves Oakland County, which has done for me at our own library for many years, at any point in the next couple months. So just congratulations, if you can go and support the library, I highly recommend it, because those types of entities need it more than ever.
Thank you.
Thank you to all of our young leaders for coming in here and speaking with us. That was awesome. I'm sure it'll be an exciting event for you, and that's it for today.
I spoke to you, speaking here tonight. I'm extremely proud of what you're doing, and I'm very happy to support it. For our younger leaders, you spoke very well. I'm very proud of you guys.
Great, I'll just mention, I know I've mentioned this before, but we, some months here, we attend a monthly Oxford Leaders Program, meeting, rather. Brian's attended a lot of the meetings, the superintendent of the school district, our fire chief, our police chief, Oxford Sheriff's Department, Terry Stiles from OCTV, the DDA, Joe, township supervisor, and I, we get together once a month in the morning and just talk all things Oxford, and kind of share, you know, what's going on at the village, what's going on at the township, because so many things do overlap, and so I just wanted to let everybody know that those are still going on. They're, I think they're very productive. You know, we're all Oxford, as Jack Curtis says, and I don't like to quote him necessarily, but it is helpful to share information across all of us, and so I think those meetings, oh, Phil Castonia from Oxford Township Parks is really been the one to kind of lead the effort, and so it's going really well, so if there are ever issues, do you want anybody, you know, in council or elsewhere, have, where, you know, just know a group of us get together every month to talk about things, and so any issue that you may have or want to raise can be brought up there to kind of get some collaborative work going. So without any further delay, then I will make a motion to adjourn at seven forty-eight. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any, motion carries. We are adjourned.
One efficient meeting.